This conference will now be recorded.
I'm back.
All right, I'm back.
Me too.
Councilmember McCabe, Councilmember Crenshaw, Councilmember Easton, Mayor Proton Priest, and Councilmember McCowsky. I think we're waiting on the city attorney to come back.
I'm back.
All right, I think we have everybody. So we will convene back into regular session at 8:41 PM. Right, if we could get everybody to mute your phones because we're getting a little feedback from some background noise. Okay, back into regular session. We're still working on Agenda Item L, no, Agenda Item J, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding the Awarding of Solid Waste Collection Contract and Notice of Cancellation of Existing Contract If Applicable. So, Council, I see Councilmember McCabe, you have a hand up.
I make a motion that we go with Waste Connections.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion or any other discussion? Councilmember McCowsky? I think we don't hear you.
Ma'am, she's seconding the motion.
Okay. We don't have any audio on you, but it... I'll look to Carvin. Carvin, is that fine if we can't hear her for the recording?
How about a hand signal with two fingers to just confirm what you're saying there?
Okay, Councilmember McCowsky, are you seconding the motion?
That works.
Yes, I see a handshake and a number two. Okay, so we will go for a vote on the motion and the second. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky? Okay, I see a head nod and, oh, yes. Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries with Waste Connections. All right, on to Agenda Item K, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Amendment to Rolling B Pre-Development Services Agreement with PMB Capital. You had in your packet an amendment to the pre-development services agreement. This is not, I think there might be a little confusion, at least from what I heard in citizen presentation, that this is the developer's agreement that governs building standards or things like that. This is not the agreement we're referring to. We are referring to the agreement to where money is deposited into an escrow account to cover costs such as legal and engineering that the city needs to spend, and Rolling B will cover those costs with this pre-development agreement. So the request is to amend the agreement from $50,000, which is what it currently is, to $75,000. We recognize that there will be more cost in the early phases of development. Later phases, maybe not as much cost. But the amendment is to increase from $50,000 to $75,000.
Mayor, I hate, like the Dickens, to do this to you, but we did have a legal issue. We wanted to discuss in executive session on this particular contract. So we might, in the interest of time, knock out maybe some of the other items on the agenda, L and M, and then come back and do it.
Sure, sure, okay. So we'll hold this item and then come back. So let's go on to Agenda Item L, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Traffic Concerns Along Main Street and B.C. Rome. As mentioned earlier in the meeting, Kim Lee Horn is working on our master transportation plan with our Master Thoroughfare Committee. And some of what they've addressed, the Main Street and B.C. Rome, is in that master plan of how to potentially change the number of lanes and put sidewalks and things like that. One of the recommendations is also to the stoplight at the exit there where the Big Z Bridge is, to have a red light there. Other than that, what other concerns? Councilmember Crenshaw, this is an item you want to discuss. What other concerns were you wanting us to look at and consider?
The big thing I got is since traffic continually backs up at the Big Z intersection, people have found that they can just cut through old Rome and come in the other way and not wait in line out on 287. And if you'll notice, the speed limit on Main Street is higher than that on the service road. I don't know what the city can do since that is a state highway. State Tech Dot owns it. Maybe ask Tech Dot to lower the speed limits. Maybe make it where some of the 18-wheeler traffic, you know, they, we don't need all that traffic going through the middle of Rome. And, you know, we have a engine brake ordinance, but, you know, that's almost impossible to enforce. You hear it all the time. But I just didn't know if there was anything we could do as a city. But I do know we have a master thoroughfare plan, but I just wanted them to realize that that traffic, we need to have a lot of the through traffic regulated through there. I just hope they address that in the master plan. Thank you.
They do, one of the, one of the things that was discussed, just to kind of give you a little information, and this is going to be brought up at the November 12 meeting as well. But on Main Street and, you know, then into B.C. Rome, instead of having four lanes, reduce it down to two with like a middle turn lane, go left or right, you know, depending, or go left, depending on which way you're coming, and then put sidewalks on there. And so by reducing the number of lanes of traffic, that's going to discourage people from coming in. Kyle, I see you're back on the line. Do you want to kind of talk about that trouble area that Mr. Crenshaw is talking about and some of the ideas?
Yeah, I'll just kind of piggyback on what you were saying along Main Street and then also at the intersection there at B.C. Rome and the frontage road. Those have both been identified as issue areas. There's been multiple conversations with Tech Dot as well, so they're involved in those conversations as we're making those recommendations. And yep, there's some, there's some ideas about the cross-sections going through Main Street. It's called a road diet, but reducing the number of lanes as well as some short-term striping that we're planning on putting or including in the master thoroughfare plan to help address some of the issues there as well right now. And then some other short-term options at the intersection of B.C. Rome and the 114 frontage. So I'd say all of those have definitely been brought up, discussed at length. I think those are the two, probably the two biggest items that we've discussed in almost all of the meetings. And so there'll be, that'll be part of the presentation that'll be given to Council on November 12, so.
Councilmember McCabe, I see a hand.
Yeah, Mayor, and Kyle, does that also include the section with the U-turn and the yield sign there, especially with the development coming in beside and behind Dollar General? Because I know I, myself, who wants to hit there several times, nobody pays attention to the no U-turn, nobody pays attention to the yield. It's a mess over there, so, but bringing in more people over there, it's only going to get worse.
Yeah, so that, that's definitely included in that. And in fact, I believe that Cynthia has had some extra conversations with Tech Dot about that. And so they're aware and it's, it's a, it's something that, that's planned for in the short term for some striping options and things like that to kind of help with that area, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Easton, I see a hand.
The master thoroughfare plan, and I apologize for missing the third meeting. That's a, that's a long-term solution, and I think it's a good one from what I had heard. But Councilmember Crenshaw is talking about, we have an immediate problem. The problem occurred today, okay? Now, I have made suggestions in the past that one of the things that we could do is we could have a police officer work like a 30-minute shift at when the peak, you know, traffic is there on that stop sign and direct traffic at that stop sign. Okay, so we can get people through. We could probably put up a sign, because I've seen them around the state at various places, where it says, "No 18-wheelers." So 18-wheelers, just say, "You can't use Main Street." Okay? And then on occasion, have one of our officers start writing tickets to any 18-wheelers that ignore it, and we motivate them to not come down Main Street. And if we, again, if we could get a police officer spending 20, 30 minutes at the peak time directing traffic at that stop sign until we can get a light. Okay, because we have an immediate problem. This is not something we can wait for Tech Dot to make it, you know, put Main Street on a diet. Okay, this is not something we can really wait for a street light to be put in. This is something we need to address with what the resources we have available to us now. Is it legal? Can we put in a sign that says, "No 18-wheelers on Main Street," period, right? You can't? I've seen them, I've seen them around the state.
That's not a city street, that's a Tech Dot street, so we have to abide by their rules, their procedures. However, your idea of having police patrol that area more is something that can be done immediately, yes.
How about directing traffic at that intersection? Because the problem is having to come to a stop. Every car having to come to a stop. Okay, if you could get a police officer sitting there and bring 20, 30 cars through at a time to turn left to go down 114, your problem is solved.
Well, that is outside the area of expertise, but I think it does, there are problems further down the road, so we might be kicking the can down the road because of the number of cars that go through. And Kyle, you can probably speak to that. There's a certain flow of traffic. We can have an officer out there, but what the optimum, you know, way to direct traffic is, probably needs to be coordinated.
Mayor, Mr. Chief Love, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir, absolutely. I bet you're on the line.
Okay. When I first came here four years ago, I tried to address that problem with an officer directing traffic. I did it myself. And when we did that, when we started letting a group of cars through there, either from B.C. Rome or from the service road, because of the traffic turning into Loves, they backed up school buses and trucks, backed up in that center turn lane and then the end of the main lane. And then we just had gridlock. We tried it probably eight or 10 different days, different weeks, and it just caused us more of a headache down there because it just gets gridlocked because everything that turns into Loves has to wait on oncoming traffic. So if they do put a light in there, they're going to have to put one in in front of Loves too and have them sync together.
Hey, and Chief, and not to mention the fact that whatever you do at the intersection by Big Z, it affects on the other side of the overpass, on that service road crossing, where somebody's going to get killed right there. Because people come through there, they don't ever check up. And if you want to turn left, there's a, there's a steady stream of cars where you just have to jump out there. So I'm not sure what the answer is. Maybe it's, I don't know, I'm not an expert on it.
We would, if we were going to do officer-controlled traffic direction at that intersection we're talking about, we'd have to have a second officer down there in front of Loves to control that intersection and stop the traffic coming from the west so the left turn people could get in there and get off of 114. I mean, anything we do just makes it worse than what it is. Now, that four-way stop sign, part of its design is to control that traffic flow.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So what you might consider doing in the short term, and Kyle, I don't know the cost of this, but doing a traffic study, because that way you can analyze that traffic that's going on Main and at that intersection. Tech Dot does have warrants that have to be met before intersections can be signalized. And Kyle, you can probably speak to that, but certainly we can do a traffic study and, and request that on Main Street and look at that intersection as well. Of course, that costs some dollars, and I'm not sure what, if Tech Dot would foot that bill or not, but we can certainly ask.
Well, and I think the bigger concern probably, I mean, if we really, we don't want the trucks on Main Street. And the problem, we realize the problem is on Big Z, but is there anything that we can do short-term on Main Street where the residents are, most of the residents aren't going to the stop sign, going left, going 114 onto somewhere else? It's the Main Street traffic. If we could address that and maybe discourage some of the people traveling through our town, maybe it's more police present just on Main Street itself, you know, at the place where they U-turn. You know, we sit at certain times of the day for, you know, periods of time and just focus on that for a little while and, and make people slow down at least.
Mayor, Mayor, we're doing that now, and we're writing citations for it.
Okay. Do we, do, is it a number of officers available issue? Or we need to allocate more hours to be able to do that, or?
Well, it's a, and of course, at the present time, you know, I don't have the part-time officer. He was helping do some of that when I had him. I've got two applicants right now I'm looking at for that. But once I get that position filled again, it will help a lot on the days that that officer works to concentrate you. But I can tell you this, by afternoon, officers, both of them, are sitting down there at different locations to watch that, and they're stopping people and writing citations. So I don't, I don't know what you're going to do to permanently discourage them. I mean, I think there needs to be a redesign for the center of that road, put a barrier up or something where they can't make it. I don't know if that's a solution. I would, I would look to a Tech Dot engineer to figure that out, if that's a plausible solution.
Yeah, so one of the discussion items in the master transportation, our master thoroughfare committee, was the road that goes behind where Dairy Queen is in front of City Hall, right there where it meets where that U-turn area is, is to try to take that away and redirect traffic to the stop sign and discourage everybody from taking that curve into town because they think it's shorter and they don't have to stop. And then just kind of redesigning that a little bit right there in conjunction with reducing the number of lanes and make it, you know, slow down and less appealing to people who are traveling through. But then as Tech Dot finally gets that, that 114 Big Z Bridge, that solution solved, you know, those all together will relieve the problem. But in the meantime, you know, I guess our officers and some striping on, on that exit are in the proposals for near term.
Yes, but you said Rome Tech Dot Road?
Yes, it is, it's a 114.
Yeah, if these were all City of Rome roads, then it would be so much easier.
Well, then maybe we need to start...
I think we beat this horse to death. Let's wait for the master thoroughfare plan. That sounds like the only thing we can do is get, get that done and deliver it to Tech Dot. So thank you, guys.
Does that sound good to everybody? All right, we'll continue this at the next meeting. Thank you, Kyle.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kenny. Thank you, Chief Love.
You're very welcome. It's something I look at every day and scratch my head about.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate your efforts. Okay, Agenda Item M, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Submitting Request for Coronavirus Relief Funds, CRF Reimbursement, and Authorizing the Mayor to Expend Funds for the City's Remaining Allotment. So... This is coming back before you because the original guidance for the coronavirus relief funds has changed. And in order to meet the new guidance and the timelines for wrapping this up, I'm asking for authorization to submit the city's request for reimbursement for public safety payroll for the eligible time period and then use those funds on eligible expenses such as the ones discussed at the previous council meetings to continue to address COVID within the city. I've been working with the Wise County Emergency Management, and they've been helping us with this. So to get everything documented and submitted, they've been a real great help. So really, all I'm asking from you tonight is just authorization to submit our reimbursement with that public safety payroll from the eligible time period and then to expend funds on the eligible expenses until those funds are exhausted. Councilmember McCowsky? Is there a make a motion? Okay, she's making a motion and shaking her head, thumbs up. Okay. So I have a motion, do I have a second? Councilmember Easton, I saw you. You have two of them up, okay. Councilmember Easton, you're the second. All right, let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky? Good thumbs up, all right, thumbs up. Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, thank you, all right. Motion carries. We're on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by council. Council reserves the right to remove any item on the consent agenda for further deliberation. We have N minutes from the city council's special session dated October 13, 2020, and O inter-local agreement with Wise County for road repairs. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember McCabe?
I so moved.
All right, Councilmember McCabe, and then Councilmember, was that Councilmember Crenshaw, was that you?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, sorry, I thought I heard him before I saw your, your second there, Mr. Easton. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember McCabe and a second by Councilmember Crenshaw. Let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky? Getting a thumbs up from Councilmember McCowsky. Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right. I think we're back to our executive session item. So Agenda Item K, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Amendment to Rolling B Pre-Development and Services Agreement with PMB Capital. We want to go into executive session under consultation with attorney to get advice in executive session. So we will go to executive session at 9:04 PM. So if everyone will follow your instructions and everyone else can stay in the regular meeting, we will be back shortly. So if everyone will follow your instructions and everyone else can stay in the regular meeting, we will be back shortly. Okay, let's see who we've got back in the meeting. I see Councilmember McCabe, Councilmember Eason, Councilmember Crenshaw, Mayor Proton Priest, Councilmember McCowsky. I believe we've got City Attorney back on the line. I think we've got everybody. City Secretary, City Administrator. Okay, so we are back from executive session reconvening at 9:18 PM. All right, is there any action as a result of executive session? Councilmember Eason?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we provide the mayor with authorization that extends through the next council meeting to enter into negotiations with PMB so that you can return the wording back to its original form and you can negotiate the price at your discretion.
All right, so we have a motion on that. Do I have a second? Councilmember McCowsky, I see a two. Is that a second motion? Okay, I see a nod.
And that, just for clarification, that motion does authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and Councilmember McCowsky, you're shaking your head. Yes, you agree to that motion? Okay.
The authorization only runs until the next council meeting.
Okay, is that the second that you want to second? Councilmember McCowsky? Okay, I'm seeing a no, so I have a motion without a second.
At the next council meeting.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear you. Okay, so Mr. Eason has a motion on the table. Does anybody want to second the motion as he stated?
I'll second it. Councilmember Crenshaw.
All right. All right, Councilmember Crenshaw, second on the motion. Let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky, thumbs up. All right, we got a thumbs up from Councilmember McCowsky. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Eason is an a. Motion carries. All right. If I've missed anything, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything tonight? Mayor Proton?
I would like to put it on the agenda that the next meeting, we can briefly discuss how we can assess our facilities, their situation, what are the needs of our facilities? Do they, you know, does it, does it need custodial care? Does it need yard care? Does it need something plumbing repaired? I would just like us to take a more active approach to the maintenance of our facilities.
Okay. All right, any other future agenda items? All right, if not, if you think of something, email City Secretary, City Administrator with your agenda item. And we will go on to our adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember McCabe? All right, we got a motion. Do I have a second? Mayor Proton, I see a second there. All right, Councilmember McCabe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky? We have a motion. How do you vote on the adjournment?
We need a thumbs up.
Thumbs up on the adjournment, all right. All right, Councilmember Eason? Two thumbs up, all right. There we go. All right, motion carries. It's 9:22 PM. Meeting's adjourned. Everyone have a lovely rest of your evening.
Good night.